Hi Bettina.
So, looks like we're still waiting for Felicita.
Yes.
And Debbie.
Hi Heather.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
Oh, so snow up your way Heather.
Oh my gosh, major. Where, where are you two? I'm in Bend.
I'm in Cobalas.
Okay.
And I'm in Sweet Home. So we had snow this morning. It's pretty melted by now, but we've had the last three days.
We keep getting, I keep getting notice and I have to go to Salem early on Wednesday and I keep getting notice that there's a big storm coming. I, we have had really bad wind storms for like the last week and it actually blew my back fence down. So I have a fence repair person coming tomorrow. But yeah, apparently they can put fences in all year long. I was like, really? The ground's frozen. Okay. You're saying you can do it. But it's supposed, we're supposed to get four inches. And it usually, usually melts right away.
So you, you take a road into Portland from there?
Well, I will be taking probably, probably 26 because I have to go to Salem.
Yeah. That's your shortest.
As long as I can get over the pass, but I have studded snow tires and four-wheel drive.
So Amy, have you heard from Felicita?
I have not, but she did share that she is very involved in the legislature and being pulled in directions. So she said she wouldn't be surprised if she wasn't able to attend. So I guess we should just assume she's not able to join us. We can get started and then if she pops in, she can jump into the conversation as needed. And I haven't heard from Debbie. So yeah, you bet. I, I think it's probably the same situation with Debbie as well.
Yeah, some budgets got approved, but not all of them yet.
Bettina, would you do the roll call today?
I can. So I'll call the role Debbie Dennis. Not here. Heather.
Here.
Felicita, Monte Blanco, not here yet. Mary Ann Schles.
Here.
And I'm here too. That's us.
So we're working on the program plan.
And I apologize, I missed the last consortia meeting. Oh, here's Debbie. Hi Debbie, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Great.
I'm on the go today, so I'm sorry I'm off camera, but I am listening.
No problem.
So Amy, what were we going to look at today?
We can't hear you if you're talking Amy.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Thank you. So in our last meeting, we had some feedback on the goals and measurement section, specifically from Mary Ann. And I think the group was really trying to weigh out how to move forward with that. The project plan is really important, this document, in that it's our agreement on what we are going to measure as a group moving forward. So it's really important for this team to really be thoughtful with this document, especially in the goals and measurements, so that we have agreement on how we're moving forward and what we're tracking, what we're focusing on. So the only person that I got homework from was Bettina. I didn't hear from anyone else, so I don't know if we want to do that as a group. I'll show all the markup of where we left off. The blue edits are Mary Ann's edits, the red are mine. And so you can see Mary Ann had tried to make edits on clarification between grant and contract. So what was black is the original text, blue is Mary Ann's proposed. And so I think we need to talk about it as a group. I, I don't know if folks just didn't have the capacity to do that in between our meeting, the last meeting and now, but we can talk about it as a group if you'd like to. Mary Ann, I'll kick it over to you as the facilitator on how you want to move forward today.
So I was just trying to lay out, it was confusing in the first draft about which, were they talking about grants? Were they talking about contracts? And what exactly should, how, how should we organize? And so I didn't submit any homework because they were my things that I would be correcting. So any feedback that you guys have, I would really appreciate it. We decided to change it from measurement to outcomes, which I think is a very good change.
I agree with all of your edits too.
Bettina, did you have edits to the?
Yeah, I think I made some edits. My, my main concerns were where we effectively said what the outcome would be rather than describe. You know, sometimes it says we, I think further down, there were some that effectively said we're having a de minimis, we, you know, which is sort of the detail of what we're doing rather than the recommended, you know, we, we haven't really agreed, you know, on what any of those tools are. So when I tried to make changes, but I don't even know if they saved. But I think the key concern I had was just not going too far into saying what our recommendation is, but only that there is a recommendation. You know, not talk about the content of the recommendation, but stay with the, the recommendation. As the outcome.
So I think this last one, submit a report to the interim committee of the legislature with a copy to DAS. I think that was a change we all made together last, the last time we met.
Yeah.
The one above it, research and recommend a mechanism for ongoing review. I think we had made those changes also.
And it looks to me like some of the things that are in blue are actually what I wrote. Like the may include wage boards or prevailing rate rates. So that's where I tried to say we're doing the report, but we don't say what it is. So the may include for me was saying, we're not talking about the content. We're just talking about what we're doing as the outcome.
So Amy, can you go up one more? Because that's the one where there were some concerns about talking about NICER or de minimis.
Yeah.
So this would be the full cost recovery?
So I just put, I think I put in front potentially rather than, you know, this, because we have not decided on NICER, we, you know, this is, we're not really that far in the process. So I thought it was more important to say that it's a full cost recovery, you know, is a model that allows us full cost recovery.
And then I think somewhere up above, we also have something about multiple year contracts and cost of living increase. Maybe it's in contracts.
Amy, can you actually not do the all markup? I'm finding it extremely hard to read. If you could just do the simple, I think it'd be easier to kind of follow. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So this is the multi-year contracts that you were talking about, Mary Ann.
Okay, so payment, admin and indirect costs, living wage, multi-year and cost of living adjustment. And those were what I understood as the things that we were tasked with.
So what I'm, I'm not debating the words that are on the paper because I think they make a lot of sense. What I'm worried about is we are now in March, April, April, May, June, July, August. So we have, you know, five months to get this done and there's a lot of organized and analyzed documentation. And I don't understand how we can do that when we're not allowed to talk to each other. So I, I'm worried about that, like process wise, and I missed the last meeting. So maybe this is going to happen in meetings or something. I guess I'm, I'm worried about all the, kind of the homework that comes with this work group when it seems so focused on process and not focused on content when we get together. You know what I mean? I'm, I'm worried because how are we going to get this work done?
So in the last meeting, I thought it was fabulous and we really did cover a lot of that.
Okay, awesome.
And, and one of the things we came up with was a questionnaire to go to each agency where they can have yes and no questions. Amy, can you kind of show that?
Thank you. Okay. So we're gonna have, we're gonna be able to populate really easily because they're going to give us the information in a standard format and then we can kind of be digging in.
Yes.
Oh, thank God. Okay.
So that initial thing I sent out with just a bunch of questions, what we needed the answer to, that became a list of who we were going to ask, what and what those questions, were they going to be yes or no's?
I love it. That's brilliant. Because this becomes then our thing that we analyze, right? Looking at this.
Right. So I think chimp monkey or something like that was the process that Amy had suggested. What is it called?
Survey Monkey.
Survey Monkey, yes. And she had come up with various questions on each. So down below you see these tabs, payment models, uniform application.
Oh my God, this is brilliant.
Standard language and review. And if, you know, each one of these will have yes, no questions or simple questions. And then Mercedes had come up with a list from our last meeting also that was very easy to understand because what we figured out was the more precise we are in our questioning, the better the quality of the quest, answers we get back.
Yep. Because there's no interpretation. It's very clear. So we're not apples and oranges. Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, because I think we have that detail. I'm thinking we can leave the project plan as short as possible, you know, will the delivery is really just the report, the recommendation. We don't need to talk about what it is, you know, just
No.
very simple in many ways. Yeah.
Would you go back to the, yeah, thank you. I think this looks really good. I feel like you guys did the good work of narrowing it.
And I think that we'll have time, you know, you, we all have concerns about time, but I think after that last meeting we had, if you have a chance to, to listen to some of that, I think you, your, some of your answers will really come clear that, that there will be a gathering process and then we will get to analyze and talk about what each one of those agencies means and, and what, what exactly leeway each and every agency has and how that can be put back together.
And this is a dumb question, but how do we know if what we get from the state is a contract or a grant? Because I don't know that it says on my actual agreements with the state. Is that something that Debbie or Amy knows? How do I know if it's a grant or a contract?
I think someone had a really good answer to that in our last meeting. Each agency was talking about the, the maximum amount it could be before it became a contract.
I'm going to lean on Debbie. Are you there Debbie?
Yeah, I'm here. I, I don't think it has to do with the maximum amount. I can answer this question in two ways. Well, I'll answer it in one way. And it's not easy. So a contract is when an entity is going to deliver services and we've spelled out kind of what those are. Like you're going to do this and then you're going to deliver us something. And we're going to look it over and say, yep, that's what we asked for. And then you can invoice us and we'll pay you. It can also be, a, a contract can be compensated based on time and materials. So after you do a thing, you tell us, you know, you, you send us an invoice. All of those have to do with getting paid based on the quantity and amount of service delivered. A grant would be more along the lines of here is the objective. We have these funds available for entities to go out and do the objective. And sometimes the money is granted upfront. And sometimes I think we're granting based on releases. It's a really, I can.
Because that doesn't necessarily narrow it for me because I'm thinking it's a very clear scope of work that we have to meet. And so I can't tell if my WIWA is a contract or, oh, it says grant on it. Okay. Interesting. So most of mine, would you say that some of them, like the contracts are more like pay for deliverable, like a?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'd be okay to just suggesting it how it is, you know, merge those changes in and.
I agree. I think it looks great.
Take on because like we're saying, we don't want to spend so much on the process when we want to go to the content. Yeah. And I think we've done, we had a good draft from Amy and this is.
Exactly. It, it was good to start and it made it better. Thank you, both of you.
What about you, Mary Ann? Are you okay with it?
No, I think it's good. I thought all this, all the input we had and then if, if, if you can go to the very bottom, Bettina and Felicita had put in a bunch of very important stuff at the very, the six, sick, was this, yeah, I think it was here and, and the communication and engagements, management plan.
So further down?
Yep.
Yeah. And I, I think we reviewed this table together as a group in our last meeting.
Right.
Right. So, but this, this, I think you guys made a lot of, we tried to, to, to say who, what, when, where, why, how, how often, all of that, so that we know exactly who we were working with. And I think this is fabulous, what you got, what Bettina and Felicita did.
Who is our contact for the governor? Who's the policy analyst that's working on this with us?
Is it?
Wayfa Ambadi.
I'm sorry, what?
Wayfa Ambadi. She is on the task force. She's a member.
Got it. It's great. Okay. So I'm not hearing there any more changes needed. It sounds like the work is done. And then I can just go to the website, right, to get the, to listen. I should listen before the next meeting. Okay.
The recordings, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all posted.
Thank you.
Amy, Amy, do you need, is there more things we need to discuss today?
No, we're just trying to finalize this plan. So if, if everyone is good with the proposed changes, I can fold them in and accept those. And then I will post the finalized version on our website. And we can just consider our work together in the subgroup complete because we've finished the task.
Great.
I was gonna, just really quick, I was looking at another program plan, which was for the DEI and then another one that had been done. And I loved some of the things that were in there, three things. One was to reduce administrative burden on both the state and the grantees.
Yes.
So I mean, I'm thinking, and then the other thing was to enhance the quality of life for all Oregonians. Because I know that we went back and forth about, were they citizens? Were they citizens of Oregon, all that. And then the last thing was to make positive social and economic outcomes for all participants. And, and I mean, I think we're considered a participant if we're a nonprofit delivering those services. We're all on that same team.
Where do you think that could go? Do you think it's in the problem statement? Or do you think it's in?
Um, where did, there was something in here where we had a question about citizens of Oregon or?
I think that was the charter, Mary Ann. I don't think it was the project plan. I think that was when we looked at the project charter as a group. Because the project plan is really more focused on our scope and our measurements.
Okay.
I can pull that out of their document.
I'll bring those up in our next meeting.
Perfect.
I like those additions too.
Well, and then I've, I'm also on Illinois website, forgot to grant accounting and transparency act. And they have a lot of fabulous stuff that they, they started in 2016 and they have what we're looking for, you know?
Wow.
They have what we're looking for. They have the full cost recovery. They have the, the, and then the other, they have the living wages, they have the cost of living increase, they have the multi-year, they have a lot of stuff that we have that they did back in 2016. And if you go to that Illinois website or just type in G A T A, it, it's, it's like what I dream ours will end up as.
Well, I think that we should link that then in the report.
It is linked and it was in part of the stuff that nonprofit association of Oregon had, had presented. But if you go there, you can actually sign on and you can take the training from, from Illinois university. So I'm thinking we could even have that tie in with UVO or OSU or something so that you can get your education online with input from one of our universities to keep the education going and being updated. And the, doing that, that process with GATA was just mind blowing.
That is so cool.
And they don't have grants and contracts. They have contracts, period.
Yep. Debbie, do you think that's something the state might be interested in is doing contracts and grants, like doing all?
Simplifying.
Contracts so that everything's clearer? I mean, not that you have a crystal ball, but.
Right. Do you mean creating a structure for grants and contracts that is sort of under one set of expectations and rules?
No, I mean, stop doing grants and just do contracts.
Oh. Wow.
Yeah, I think the, the, from our experience, grants are more flexible than contracts. You know, that's where I think if we talk about contracts, we have a lot more legal pieces to jump through. So grants are for us have been a way of actually expediting things and being more creative and being more flexible. I'm sort of hmm. If we went to grants, I would say that's a good thing.
And I'd like to see, I'd like to see both of them come back toward, in the middle for that reduction of administrative burden on both the state and us. That's where I would like to end up, whether it's a grant or, you know, however it's done. Make it uniform, make it standard, make it easy, make us be able to get paid fully for it, make living wage multi-year with a COLA, use the uniform guidelines from the feds.
Yeah, because you could use that in both kinds, right?
Yes, exactly.
I, I guess too, you know, the thing that really stood out to me when we were getting all those PowerPoints was Department of Education. Holy cats, what was it? 10,000 contracts or something crazy? Like, that's crazy. The administrative burden on that is absurd. That's where all our money's going into is contracts, managing contracts, writing a contract. Like what? How much, how much money is going into administration of contracts just for ODE?
Can I ask each of you, when you do, when they do monitoring or audit of your programs, typically how long does that take? Is it like four to eight hours? Is it?
Um, when we get monitored, it's usually over the course of a week. And so there's a desk review that we get sent where they ask us to submit all these things. And then when they come out, they end up asking us for all of those same things again, which is not really the ideal process. The ideal process is you ask questions about the things that you already had and you review them before you show up. That's how we monitor. But it usually depends if it's program and fiscal, if it's program or fiscal, but it, usually they schedule themselves to be at our shop for two days.
Wow. Bettina?
Yeah, we've got, you know, we have licensing, which is definitely completely separate from our contracts. So it's, it's really, our contracts are monitored on a monthly basis effectively because we report, you know, we don't get paid till we submit reports under a schedule. And you know, sometimes there's one report, sometimes there's. And you know, sometimes there's one report, sometimes there's a quarterly report in addition. So we don't really have anyone coming out in addition other than if they just, you know, want to give us a visit because everything else is done through licensing, you know, from Oregon Health Authority or Delk or DHS. And those take longer, you know, those licensing visits take longer. They're similar to what Heather was saying, you know, we submit stuff and then they are here probably mostly in less than two days, you know, a day or maybe a day and a half, depending on. You know, if they have both of them, they've even coordinated to come together, DHS and OHA. So we don't have to do it twice.
And we only get state visits around our federal WIWA funds. And that's because they have, they come out and they test transactions and then they ensure that anybody who has served was enrolled. Not just.
Yeah.
So they're basically looking for disallowed costs and then they want to look at all of our policies that are related to different things. Because we're also kind of a pass through. So that might be why we get monitored more closely because we also contract out.
Yeah, we don't, but we are victims of Crimex or Justice. They've done desk reviews, you know, I just scanned everything in and there might be one or two questions, but that's it. So it's, it's a real mix. There's no, no real. And it's the same with other grants from grantors in the private sector. Some of them want a lot, some of them don't.
Yes.
When some of them just want to report. Yeah. Like when I get money from Meta, they're like, here's your check. Can I come and see the program sometime? Okay.
Can you send us, can you send us some stories at the end of the year? Yeah.
Yes, exactly. I can send you a success.
Send us some cute pictures, yeah, of kids.
Exactly. A couple of pictures with kids. That's what they want.
So I think we've done everything for this plan, no?
We are.
Well, I think you guys have. Thank you for all your work.
Well, part of it is we want you to be comfortable with the process and, and understand how we're moving forward and that that works with your agency also.
Hundred percent. I think it's great. I have to say, some of the smartest people I've met in this state have been on this work group.
Well, that's nice to hear. I hope it's true.
Yeah, they're in this room. Yeah. But like Mercedes and Felicita, all of you, you have such good things to contribute. And I just feel really lucky to be on this with y'all, so.
Well, I think Amy too, because looking up Amy's name, I came on an article about who, who used to be the poet laureate for Oregon and found one of my favorite poems. So, you know.
I love it. Well, and Amy's tracking, she's keeping track of all of our shenanigans, which has been hard. I can't imagine that's been easy.
It's been interesting. It's been a fun task for sure.
It's like herding cats. Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have great days.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you at the next meeting.
Take care. Bye bye. Bye Debbie, bye Amy, bye Heather, bye Bettina.